... One in silence and a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the Lord is our God. Mr. Reba, roll call please.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Fume.
Here.
Mrs. Kay.
Here.
Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Garcia.
Here.
And Mr. Zola.
Here.
Announcement of executive sessions held as follows. June thirteenth, twenty sixteen, executive budget meeting, personnel budget issues. June twenty first, twenty sixteen, personnel litigation and the sale of property. June twenty third, twenty sixteen, executive budget meeting, personnel and budget issues. June twenty ninth, twenty sixteen, personnel litigation and the sale of property. At this time, will have any public announcements, Mr. Donati?
Okay, good evening. Tonight, on behalf of the Hazleton area school district, I have the pleasure of recognizing two groups of students. One representing Freeland Elementary Middle School and the other representing Valley Elementary Middle School. As I call your name, please come forward. The students being recognized here tonight won the first place in the WVIA Box of Light Stop Motion Animation Competition. The students were given the assignment of creating a stop motion animation that teaches a math, science, or social studies concept to children in their grade level. First, the Freeland Elementary Middle School students. Ms. Kayla Dickert. Ms. Allison Randcon. And Mr. Joseph Halasak. The students from Freeland Elementary Middle School did their project in the math subject area, the distributive property. Next, the Valley Elementary Middle School students. First, Ms. Molly Zanachko. Mr. John Chirco. Mr. Kurt Gammmer. And Mr. Bryce Greco. The students from Valley Elementary Middle School did their project on science and social studies, and it was the interventions of Ben Franklin. Congratulations to all students.
Public comments directed at the board and agenda items only. Mr. Fume?
John Petrell, number thirty-nine.
Mr. Petrell, before you start, items number eight, sixteen, seventeen, twenty-nine, and eighty-seven are going to be removed from the agendas. Eight, sixteen, seventeen, twenty-nine, and eighty-seven. Everybody have it?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Petrell.
Oh yeah, evening people. I just have a comment on the tax structure. I know I've been doing this probably for eight to ten years already. The disparity between the three counties. And I would suggest if you ever want to see the disparity, ask Mr. Reba to take a hundred thousand dollars in each county and tell you what the taxes are for the same value home. I suggest you ask him that. Luzerne County is the only county where the market value is less than the assessed value, even after adjusting the fifty percent to one hundred percent assessed value in Carbon and Schuylkill. And are shy by over one point one billion dollars. The market value we lose because we're working with steep numbers. The market value of that one billion dollars that we lose that could be spread over more taxpayers, instead of spreading it over a little bit of taxpayers in Schuylkill County. It would be such more evenly distributed. So what I'm asking you to do is look at option one, zero, and option one. If you have to, use some of your fund balance. In the meantime, I think it's time, it's overdue that we went back, we go back to the state tax equalization board, we find out what other formulas are available. Because this nonsense of this uneven distribution has to stop. One county can't keep getting hit with all the tax increases. It's got to stop. It's a lot easier for people, everybody in Luzerne County up there to vote for a tax increase when it doesn't affect them as much. It's always been easier to do that. And so I'm asking you, when people think I'm only for Schuylkill County, no, I'm for equal tax taxation in all three counties. So if somebody has a hundred thousand dollar home in each county, they all pay the same amount of taxes. And that don't pay forty-seven, at one point it was seventy percent more in Schuylkill County. And I ask you people, if you would vote for a tax increase, if you had to pay fifty to seventy percent more in taxes. Or you could see this coming when we had, when we put Bishop Paffey on and we added the science school on. People talk about the pension cost. We could see this coming. We were going to overextend ourselves with the overhead in those two schools. There is your tax make-up right there. We couldn't afford those two schools. Sometimes you have to live with what you got. We can't be greedy all the time. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Petrell, I would just like to make one comment if I may, please. I deal with people getting mortgages and equity loans. And I'll give you an example. We had one person come in and her tax assessment was seventy-four thousand dollars. And when it was appraised, it was appraised at forty-two. So guess where she went? Another person came in for an empty lot, was assessed at forty-two, came in appraised at twenty thousand five hundred. Guess where she went? To get the assessment changed. And that happened to us. What have we done, six hundred thousand dollars? This year, on tax assessments that were lowered. So it's not only Schuylkill County, it's Luzerne County. So if Luzerne County is overtaxed, they're starting to get smart enough and they're starting to go and appeal their assessments. Well, they may be, but I know two properties right there that weren't. And appraisal came out to justify it. And I'm sure there are other ones.
What you're seeing is the state tax equalization board sends auditors out in each county every year.
Yep.
And they come out and they check the sales. Well, I know you have a lot of sales within the Hilton area where they're selling for a lot less.
Correct.
And that is bringing it down. And I don't think it's a fair assessment. I don't think Steve is doing a fair assessment because you're taking all your homes out of stock. People who are selling at a profit aren't selling usually. The people who are trying to move out of an area are selling at a loss to move.
And that's what causing the assessments to go down. For the exact same reason.
One of the reasons why we're seeing this go down. And there are different formulas we can look into to try and make it more equitable. But this kind of stuff, where you see Schuylkill County give up a hundred and eighty dollars and Luzerne County seventy dollars.
And carbon goes down. Carbon goes down.
You see the differential. When you have a thirty-two mill and you assess that fifty percent and the other counties assess a hundred percent. Your millage should be half of my millage. You're at ninety. I'm at thirty-two.
Correct.
Absolutely insane.
Mr. Petrell, if I might add one thing, we did look at all that stuff that you mentioned up there. Putting different numbers in, different prices from Carbon, from Luzerne, from Schuylkill. We're very well aware of how it affects Schuylkill County. And yet tonight, and I really don't know what's going to happen up here, and yet tonight we do have to vote on something, so.
And this is why a couple of years ago, I suggested maybe we shouldn't go in too quick forward with parts being controlled and having too much of the overhead. It's one of the things a lot of people didn't believe in, a lot of overhead, that's the overhead, because they knew the pensions were coming. So if we're going to blame it, we're just too much to blame as the pension system. We're the ones in control of our costs.
Mr. Petrell, thank you again for always coming, speaking, and enlightening us, and actually informing us of the situation. I will, I need to correct you to let you know that, because I live in Luzerne County, lived in Luzerne County my whole life. Nothing about this is easy, nothing. And I can promise you that we're elected at large. The kids of Schuylkill County are as important to me, and I know the other eight board members and the residents, especially those on a fixed income, are as important to me as my own, as my own family member. Because I know how difficult it is when we haven't seen a cost of living increase for senior citizens in some time. What I cannot understand is how this tax formation has come to this. And again, I look to you and I really do respect you, and I know you know that, how we've come to this. And it only seems like we speak about this June twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, where it's like almost too late. You know, how, if we go for option zero, we will lose well over a half million dollars, right? So option one, where we hold the line on taxes, actually Carbon goes down a little, Luzerne remains the same, or there's just a little increase or decrease, but Schuylkill has that bump. I still can't understand it. I don't know how it's fair. I know that there's no funny business being played in this district. What I'm saying is, I want it, no tax increase for anyone. I want everything to remain the same. That does not exist in the Hazleton area school district. It doesn't exist. We can't, the only way we do that is by losing well over a half million dollars of revenue, which we can't afford at all. Again, I don't know what I'm going to do either until that.
It has existed. It has existed until a lot of it's started. That's tax base. When you have, when you lose a billion dollars, that's tax base. When you could spread it over more people and spread the pain over more people. If we didn't have a three-county system, you'd be able to go to the assessor's office and get the number from the assessor's office. We only have one county.
True.
We're stuck, I mean, I know we're stuck with what we have.
Just a couple. Just a cup.
What you keep hitting one county, there has to be a limit. And if it means holding and stop spending, then that's what it means. It would mean putting more people in a classroom until times get better, then that would mean, that's what it means. These people out here, and they have families. Somebody gets laid off, they know what they have to do. It's no secret. They have to cut back. That's limited in a means until things improve again.
Thank you, Mr. Petrell.
Thank you.
Mr. Fume?
Carmine Christie for number eighty-seven, but eighty-seven's been struck, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so we move to Mark Raybo.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm here to talk about the general fund final budget and the homestead resolution. I believe that going off of what the last showman said about the property tax, the base. I think that what happened with the assessment in two thousand eight were based on inflated levels, as we all know from the real estate bubble that happened, and then the crash that happened thereafter. I have been at most every county meeting that there is, and I can tell you that on several occasions, myself, the city council president, and also others have brought up the need for the reassessment to be done again based on current levels, because the levels that were done in two thousand eight were based on inflated levels. So I think it's high time that the county do another reassessment based on the current levels now. Now, I understand that will cause an impact on tax revenues because it obviously, as Mr. President, you alluded to, the real estate values based on the appraised values currently are much lower. I get that. But that's also a cause to improve, that there needs to be improved property values rather than increased tax levels. Because if you improve the property tax base, you will get more revenue. You cannot expect the opposite to happen. When you increase taxes, you're not going to increase the tax base. You're going to constrict the tax base because it's reducing, it's like the pie theory in economics. You reduce the pie rather than expand it or make more pies for more people coming in. So I think you need to take that into consideration, that you need to improve the property, you need to improve tax base. And also, alluding to what was about the tax formulation, it's based on the state law of Act five eleven, the Local Tax Enabling Act. And I've said this to the state delegation that was up in the county meeting two months, or almost three months ago now. I told them that they needed to reform the Local Tax Enabling Act because it's based on a nineteenth-century formula. And we can't, as you experience, as the county experiences, we can't live on a nineteenth-century formula to solve the twenty-first century problems. It can't be done. So that needs, and that's incumbent upon our state officials to do that. We can ask them to do it, but it's upon them to do it. So I would appreciate that, if those suggestions that I made to you, if you could take those up under advisement. Thank you.
Mr. Raybo, what I would like to make a suggestion to you, next time you go to a county meeting, and if they are going to reassess the county, have them go inside the homes and not walk around them, like they did last time. Because that was a farce.
Yes.
That assessment last time was a farce.
I agree.
They had no idea what was inside the house. They had no idea it was made up. Have them go inside, do a real assessment, not a cursory one walking around and jacking the prices up unbelievable.
They should have done a revision. According to state law, if the prices were off by more than fifteen percent, under state law, they're supposed to do a county-wide revision. Not another reassessment, but a revision of those valuations. So I think that's what should have happened, but it didn't happen.
It did not happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fume?
That's it, Mr. President.
Okay, approve the board minutes for regular board meeting, May twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Special board meeting minutes of June thirteenth, twenty sixteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
H. Treasury report for May twenty sixteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry about that. Okay, we'll begin with the agenda, Mr. Reba.
Okay, so we're asking you to approve items one through nine with one motion excluding number eight.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers one through nine, excluding eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I have it, motion passes.
Specifically four and five.
We're moving on, Mr. Zola.
Yes.
We noted Mr. Zola's no vote on numbers four and five. Asking you to approve items ten through fourteen.
So moved.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers ten through fourteen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it, motion passes. We're asking you to approve items fifteen through twenty-five with one motion excluding sixteen and seventeen.
Comments?
On the question, this five thousand dollar donation from Cabot Oil. Didn't we refuse a donation a couple of years ago, Tony, from Cabot Oil?
I believe we did. It was in a book or something like that.
It was a curriculum.
Yes, it was a curriculum.
This I think is for equipment.
So this five thousand is for equipment?
That's what I understand.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers fifteen through twenty-five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it, motion passes. We're asking you to approve numbers twenty-six through twenty-eight and amend number twenty-seven to include after Transfinder and implement its recommended changes.
So moved. Second.
Comments, questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers twenty-six through twenty-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it, motion passes. We're removing number twenty-nine. Number thirty, recommend the board approve a sixty-month operating lease with Hewlett Packard Financial Services for the lease of four hundred laptop computers.
So moved. Second.
Comments, questions? Mr. Reba, roll call.
Number thirty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
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 Why don't we do a roll call vote? Mr. Benomo, number thirty.
No.
Mr. Chapman, number thirty.
I was mistaken, I'm going to change to no.
Mr. Fume?
No.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. Mahalik?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No.
Mr. Zola?
No.
And Mr. John?
No.
Number thirty does not pass. Thirty-one, recommend the board approve a thirty-month operating lease with Hewlett Packard Financial Services for the lease of one hundred and twenty-five laptop computers to be used by students at the Hazleton Area Academy of Sciences. Annual cost not to exceed sixteen thousand five fifty, pricing as per CoStar State Contract, budgeted in the sixteen-seventeen proposed budget pending approval of the solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second. Mr. O'Donnell? Comments, questions? Mr. Reba, do a roll call?
Thirty-one, Mr. Benomo?
No.
Mr. Chapman?
No.
Mr. Fume?
No.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. Mahalik?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No.
Mr. Zola?
No.
And Mr. John?
No.
Thirty-one failed. Thirty-two, recommend the board approve a sixty-month.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call, Mr. Benomo or Reba?
Mr. Benomo?
No.
Mr. Chapman?
No.
Mr. Fume?
No.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. Mahalik?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No.
Mr. Zola?
No.
And Mr. John?
No.
Number thirty-two fails. Thirty-three, recommend the board approve a sixty-month.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba, roll call?
Thirty-three, Mr. Benomo?
No.
Mr. Chapman?
No.
Mr. Fume?
No.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. Mahalik?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Garcia?
No.
Mr. Zola?
No.
And Mr. John?
No.
Thirty-three fails. We're asking you for a motion to approve items thirty-four through thirty-eight with one motion. Number thirty-seven changes the last number there from two hundred and ten thousand to two hundred thousand six hundred dollars. Two zero zero six zero zero.
Do we have a motion from anyone? Thirty-four, eighty-eight, thirty-eight, I was for lack of a motion.
Move on.
Yep.
Under Finance, we're asking the board to approve a general fund budget option for the period July one, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Do you want us to call the board member's name and you listen?
Two and one, right? We're not doing two and three A are off the table, right?
Or a second?
I'll second the motion.
So, so I'm clear, the motion is to vote on either zero or one? Is that your motion?
That would be my motion, yes.
And Mr. O'Donnell?
No, Mr. Zola, you've.
I'm just, on the question, I'm just wondering if you should stop or recess for a minute here and discuss something?
A second, recess.
Sure.
Take a short break. ... Mr. Reba?
Okay, the motion on the floor is to vote on tax option number one. Is that correct? You made the motion, Mr. Chapman?
Uh, the option number one, yes.
And we had a, Mr. Chapman made the motion, do we have a second on option one?
I did second that.
Jared seconded it. Just for, uh, comment purposes on option number one, um, as far as the tax rates go, Luzern County will stay at the same tax rate, uh, Carbon County will get a decrease in their tax mileage rate and Schuylkill County will get an increase. Schuylkill will go from thirty-three point eight-two-nine up to thirty-four point seven-seven-zero. Carbon will go down from twenty-eight point zero-seven-zero to twenty-six point five-zero-nine, and again Luzern will stay the same.
I'd like to add too, that that's not a formula that we come up with, that comes from where?
State Tax Equalization Board, like Mr. Petrow mentioned earlier.
Yes, just so everybody's clear on that, it's not something we do or would wanna do.
Mr. Reba, would you give us an idea what the tax decreases and increases are under option one?
Okay, in option one, uh, we looked at, um, again, a couple of comments are, one is our homestead that we offer, as you know, two homestead properties, there's just about nineteen thousand homestead properties in the district. It's actually decreasing by about four hundred properties for this year, um, which means there's same amount of money, but if you cut it by four hundred less properties, the actual homestead's going up approximately ten dollars and some change. So with that factored in for option one, um, again Luzern County, uh, their tax rate staying the same. We took a property on the mileage, or, uh, on the homestead list, we need to cut the properties in half and look at the median assessment. So the median assessed value for a home in Luzern County is a hundred and six thousand, approximately. In Schuylkill and Carbon Counties, because they're assessed at a fifty percent ratio, Schuylkill's about fifty-one thousand and Carbon's about forty-nine thousand for the median property. So for a Luzern property at the median of, again, about a hundred and six thousand, the tax rate staying the same in Luzern for option one, with that ten-dollar decrease for the homestead, they'd actually see a cut of about ten dollars and four cents. For Carbon County, again, they'd get the cut for the homestead, plus the tax rate's going down for a property at the median in Carbon County, again, about a hundred and six thousand value, they would get a decrease of about eighty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. And Schuylkill County, um, again, the same property with the homestead figured in, would get an increase of about thirty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents for option one.
Mr. Reba, roll call on option one?
Uh, Mr., uh, Mr. President, thank you, I just, uh, a comment, um, I, I don't wanna be selfish, but I'm gonna need to be for a moment. It's my seventh year voting on a budget, definitely by far the most painful one. I said a few weeks ago in a public meeting, I thought it was tough in two thousand and nine, th- this is bad, uh, it's really bad. Comes on the heels of, you know, maybe, not maybe, uh, definitely not a, a wonderful article as it relates to our scores and student performances in the Hayosan area school district. You look at that and you look at the decisions that we've already made, cutting kindergarten, which, you know, obviously is, is something that no one up here wanted to do, none of the educators wanted to do that, and I'm sure most parents, and I'm sure some will be speaking at the end of the evening about that. We, we did all those things with, with extremely, extremely heavy hearts. We are fighting for the survival of this district, and I don't mean to be dramatic, but it is dramatic, folks. Our fund balance is depleted, I know Mr. Petrow stated, and a, a lot could agree with him, that we went and opened up two new schools, not because we wanted to build new schools, not because we wanted beautiful new buildings for our kids to walk in, because we were so overcrowded in the existing buildings that it was not safe. It was dangerous having that many kids on the campus, it just was dangerous. Uh, speaking of danger, something the Hayosan area school district must do that a lot of other districts do not have to do is spend an awful lot of money in security. And we have, police, I look at our police chief here, sir, thank you for what you do, I know what your, your folks do, we're a very, very safe school district. We are not a safe, we're not a safe area, a- and you know that, Chief Harry, and I won't put you on the spot, we are not a safe area. Lot of these kids that you see getting in trouble are in our school systems and at nighttime engaging in some very, very serious crime. It doesn't happen in our schools, thank God and thank you people. Our kids are doing really well, again, those numbers, they're, they're misleading, because we have a high, high, high number of economically disadvantaged students. My good friend Dr. Childs always says, just 'cause you're poor doesn't mean you can't perform well. Unfortunately, and he's not here tonight, so I know he won't debate me, but there's correlation after correlation after correlation from all the educational gurus, however you get that designation, they exist, and the one thing is a fact, when you're economically disadvantaged, you perform less. It's a very sad reality, but it's a very real reality that the Hayosan area school district is faced with. We are not making excuses, um, we wanna do better, we're trying to do better. We have some of the most dedicated staff that, that I know of, I'm proud of them. I see these wonderful districts that are doing amazing numbers, year after year after year. I, I wish the state would, just for one year, allow us to switch our lowest performing school with that highest performing school up north. Let's take our teachers, put them in that school, let's take their teachers and put them in our school, and let's see what the results are. And I promise you, if those results are any different, I would resign in a second and I would quit my job as a public school administrator. It's not the staff, it's not the programs, it's the serious, serious challenges we have. With that said, and I could probably ramble forever, and, and I won't, 'cause your time is more valuable than my, my personal thoughts here, but I will tell you, it is with an extremely heavy, heavy, heavy heart that any senior citizen or any person on a fixed income will see a little bit of an increase this year. It's, it's extremely, extremely difficult for me, I do not wanna do it, I wish there was another option, but there isn't another option that sustains this district for another year. Thank you.
Mr. Mahalik, if I can just piggyback on your comments, uh, first of all, I'd just like to thank the, uh, the Budget Committee for, for looking into this budget, putting on, putting the budget under the microscope, probably like no other year since I've been on the board, and probably in years past as well. This board has done, uh, a significant, uh, spent a significant amount of time in researching different ways that this board, uh, can cut, uh, different things, sometimes at the expense of students, unfortunately, however, this board, that was a last resort. Truly and honestly, this board has done, uh, a, a significant job, uh, over years past in looking at different ways that we can touch, that we can cut this budget. Unfortunately, I, I cannot support, uh, option number one, and it's for reasons that I have brought up in the past two years that I've been on the board. The state has reluctantly not moved forward with any sort of pension reform efforts. The Senate approved something that would put a Band-Aid on the issue, or, I'm sorry, the, the House supported some things, the Senate shot it down recently in the past couple of days. The state doesn't know what to do with pension reform, but the fact of the matter is, that's probably the single most contributor to our economic problems that we face in this district. The pension, pension reform has to happen, it's not a, maybe it happens next year, it has to happen now. I really hope that this board, maybe even through a committee, that we can form, that we can address the state ish, the state budget issues like pension reform, like, uh, like a, uh, sales tax reform in this state, so that we can identify, property tax reform as well, so that we can identify and we can push to legislators as elected officials, because we are elected officials, we need to work collaboratively with our state legislators, so that they understand the hardship that we are under come budget time and increasing taxes for our senior citizens and our hardworking families throughout this district. Year after year, we're forced to, uh, raise taxes in some fashion, and we can't do it anymore, truly we can't, and that's why I'm opposing option number one. But truly, we're in a position moving forward that we are going to be under significant economic stress come next year as well. This isn't a problem, even if we do support option number one. The economic reality is that we're going to be in a similar position next year. These problems do not go away. We are going to have to look at significant cuts next year as well. And I truly hope that we identify, that we continue to identify ways that we can continue to cut this budget as much as possible without hurting students. But when you look statewide at some other districts, Erie Public Schools, next year they're shutting down every single high school in their district. Every single high school will be eliminated. They will be forced, those students will be forced to find another school district to go to high school. They are eliminating every, this year they're eliminating every single technology purchase. They're eliminating libraries, they're cutting guidance counselors, they're cutting, they're eliminating so much of their budget because they're underfunded by thirty-seven million dollars. They're facing similar problems that we are. These realities are going to follow school districts like Erie, like ours and other school districts that have a similar tax base and have a similar student population. It's unfortunate, but it's a reality that we have to face as a school district and school districts like ours, that we have to tackle Harrisburg and say, things have got to change. And I truly hope that we can work together with Harrisburg so that we can make this happen. So, thank you, Mr. John, for allowing me to speak.
I just have a few things to say. I agree with Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Mahalik on a lot of the issues. I'm one of several people here that's only been here seven months and we've been faced with cuts, as everyone knows, and now possible tax increases. You know, government needs to, before raising taxes and cutting, needs to move the money where it needs to be, needs to cut the waste and put the money where it's best used. And we've been trying to do that and this next year, we have to really look hard into that because we are going to be faced with a bigger dilemma next year. We need to look at salaries, we need to look at administration, we need to look at pay freezes. There's a lot we're gonna need to look at before taxes can be raised again. You know, options three A and two, I cannot vote for. I cannot raise taxes to that, put that burden on taxpayers. The problem is option one and option zero. If we don't vote for option one, we're basically losing one point two million dollars, which we cut half, went to half-day kindergarten to save one point two million dollars and now it's like, you're negating that. Unfortunately, option one does have a very small tax increase to Schuylkill County residents while a decrease in Carbon and staying the same in Luzern. If nothing is done with taxes this year, I'm afraid it's gonna have to, it's gonna be worse next year. So maybe this could fend off a possible larger increase next year. It is a tough decision, but something needs to be done and we're trying our hardest in making major cuts and we've got a battle. We've got a battle next year and I think we need to start July first looking more and more into where, if there's any waste and where we can cut first without harming the children.
Mr. John, if I could just have a second as well. I attended every budget meeting that we had this year and probably everyone last year. Every work session that we had and, you know, we looked at everything. And there are people, I look across the audience here, there's people here that are affected, people that lost jobs right here in this audience tonight in this district because of what we had to do to try and reduce the budget. So, you know, everyone's feeling, you know, a little bit of a pinch here and a lot of a pinch in some cases. And I want you to remember that something that I learned that, you know, I wasn't familiar with at the time, but we lost millions of dollars to the K O Z's, tax dollars that should have been coming into the school district to help run this district. And we lost that money. I mean, millions of dollars a year in taxes. You know, it has to come from somewhere. When you lose that type of money, the pension reform, you know, the pension, our contributions have gone up considerable every year, you know, over the last five, ten years and certainly some of the spending habits of the district, which we really, you know, got into this year. And that's why I think you see a lot of the cuts that are made. I think you saw tonight, voting on technology, new technology and that, a lot of that was put down until we can figure out how to go about getting the most for our money. And we did that with a lot of positions as well, guys. You know, positions that people retired from, we took those positions and we said, how can we get the most? Instead of just filling it at that salary, how can we get the most out of it? So a lot of hard work went into this budget and I think it's where it's at. So I appreciate the time on the board. Thank you.
Anybody done that then?
I'm back with you, Tony.
I lost you, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'd like to wrap this up if I may. All the board members here attended budget meetings from January on. Mr. Zola, Mr. Chapman and I have not missed one meeting all year, twice a week, sometimes three times a week. It's a very difficult decision to make. To give you a little idea, I was a teacher and administrator in this district for forty-five years. Mr. Chapman was a teacher and administrator in this district for thirty-five years. Thirty-six, I'm sorry.
Give me the thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Mr. Mahalik was a teacher in this district before he got a real good job up in Wilkes-Barre. Mr. Zola was a teacher in this district. He was also director of security for twenty years. These cuts did not come easy for any of us on this board, especially the four of us, no question. However, I think Mr. Zola put it very well, so did Mr. Mahalik. If we don't do something this year, if we don't raise the taxes a little, we have to take two point seven million dollars out of our fund balance. Next year, we could be down to nothing, like some school districts are now. Some school districts had to go and borrow money and pay interest on it. Because of Mr. Krasinski, Mr. Reba and Mr. Leman, we didn't have to do that because of the way they run the district. Can't say that about next year or the year after. We're just trying to survive, I think as Mr. Zola said, we are trying to survive big time. You want to close the schools down, like Mr. O'Donnell said about Erie? Possibility. Not now, thank God, because of the way we were financially managed by those three gentlemen and by the board, because we do watch people's money. I watch other people's money. I don't watch my own, because I don't have to answer to myself. But I'm very stingy with other people's money. It was very difficult for us to cut programs, trust me. Every one of us up here didn't want to cut a program because it affects the kids and that's why we're on this board for. It's not for the adults, it's for the kids and that's why we're here. So those decisions were extremely difficult, I know, for everybody, but especially for the four of us who have maybe a little bit more relationship to the educational system. Very difficult. Can't promise for next year though. Can't promise anything. So I just want to let you know, it was not an easy decision for any of us, period. However, these decisions are, that's why we got voted into, I guess, to make tough decisions, even though they're decisions we don't want to make, but we have to make them. And we are gonna make them. We have no choice. Because otherwise the state will come in and take us over and God only knows what will happen then. So please bear with us for one more year to see what happens, starting July first. Mrs. Kay made a very good point earlier in the evening that we want to start July first looking at everything. And we will do that. That's a promise from all nine of us up here. We will look at everything with a microscope next year, fine tooth comb. So please bear with this. Give us one more year to see what we can come up with and we will do our best to make you proud of us. Anyone else on the board?
I'm just gonna say one thing now, since soon as someone brings me up. I've also said that we need to start running this like a business because that's what it is. The business with a product that no other business has. The product is educating our children. I happen to live with one income and I do know how hard it is to live paycheck to paycheck like most people in this area. I do know how hard it is for the senior citizens and for that reason, because of things that we still need to do, I cannot vote to increase their taxes until I'm sure that every stone was unturned and everything that we could have saved, we saved. We did make a lot of cuts. Mr. John is right. We did make a lot of hard decisions and everybody is very torn with this. Kindergarten, I was never in favor of, going to half-day as well as Mr. Mahalik, but we really had no option. But if we do not get the spending under control, if we do not start looking at this as a business entity and running it as such as you would run your own business, we will be in very big trouble and we will go bankrupt within the next three years. So I would like everyone to remember that and we need to start working on this budget. You're right, July first.
Yes, absolutely.
Anyone else? Mrs. Scarsella?
Anything else to say? I would add, I can't add anything because everybody that spoke up here spoke very eloquently and really, they're all right. Nobody's wrong. So I'll just leave it at that. This is a very difficult decision though.
Mr. Benomo, anything to add?
No, thank you.
Mr. Reba, roll call.
We're voting on option one for number thirty-nine. Mr. Benomo?
No.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Fiume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Scarsella?
No.
Mr. Zola?
Yes.
And Mr. John?
Yes.
Motion passes five-four. Number forty, recommend the board approve a homestead resolution for sixteen-seventeen. Again, they're matched up to each option, so we need a motion on option one. Again, the homestead increasing approximately ten dollars over this year.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number forty, option one. Mr. Benomo?
Pass.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Fiume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kay?
Can I pass?
Sure. Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Scarsella?
No.
Mr. Zola?
Yes.
No.
Mr. John?
Let me clarify this, Mr. Reba. This motion is to increase the homestead by ten dollars?
Yes.
That means the taxpayer will be getting a...
Taxpayers get it.
Taxpayers get ten extra dollars.
Taxpayer's gonna be saving money.
That's the homestead property.
Homestead property.
They have a homestead property.
So no vote means they don't want to give it to them.
Under option one.
Yes, under any option.
Under any option.
Yes.
Mr. Benomo, did you say?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mrs. Kay?
Yes.
Okay, number forty-one, recommend the board approve a tax resolution option for sixteen-seventeen.
So moved.
Again, we're looking at option one to match the other two. We have a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Where is this? I'm sorry.
This is forty-one at the top.
No, I know. Where is the option list?
This option for the tax resolution actually establishes the tax rates under option one.
Any questions, comments? Kay, okay with that? You see it?
To be honest, I just don't know what we're voting on. I can't vote on something I don't know.
Can you bring up the tax resolution for option one on the screen?
Millage rates. This is the one you're going, right? We're at this.
That's okay. I'm good.
Mr. Reba?
Okay, on forty-one, B for option one. Mr. Benomo?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Fiume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Scarsella?
No.
Mr. Zola?
Yes.
And Mr. John?
Yes.
Motion passes. Asking you to approve items forty-two through fifty-four with one motion.
Second.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, number forty-seven, I'm not sure if it's to our solicitor or, I guess, to our solicitor. I don't want to put Dr. Superintendent on the, I know he's on the phone, I'm not sure how well he can hear me. Okay, I thought so. Attorney Slusser, these policies specifically, have they gone through PSBA? Have PSBA looked at these or have we?
I'm not sure if it's referred to be reviewed by the superintendent.
Okay.
I reviewed them for content, if they're acceptable, but I'm not sure if they've been...
Okay.
I could comment as soon as we get them on.
I believe Bobby, I can answer at least A through D.
Mr. Reba, I'm sorry?
It's okay.
Sorry, Dr. Butler.
We're on number forty-seven regarding the five policies.
Okay, okay. Dr. Butler and I, I had my questions answered. I was just looking at number forty-seven, A through E, as it relates to policies. Dr. Butler, I just wanted to make sure that these were looked at. I know our solicitor has given his stamp of approval. PASBO has also, we've taken a lot of the wording from PASBO in our auditors. So my questions have been answered, Dr. Butler.
Hey, there's one more.
Any other questions?
I have one. On E, we discussed it at the meetings last week, but did we get to see a finished copy of this? And Attorney Slusser, did you get an opportunity to go over E?
I did review E.
Okay.
I did. And again, it was, it was my understanding of form, a form policy that was utilized in another district. I reviewed it for content. I thought it was in fine order.
I mean, it's necessary, required. I know, we just didn't get to see, we saw some drafts of it, but not a finished copy of it, so, okay.
Do you want to table these until next one? I mean, it's...
Just E maybe.
Well, there's a motion on the floor. Somebody want to make a motion to table?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we table E only until we get a chance to see it again.
We have a motion and second to table forty-seven E.
Any other comments?
I've read through each of these. I am fine with each and every one of them, including E. I understand the reasoning for tabling, but I think these are very good policies that surprisingly have not been in place prior.
Absolutely.
I have read them and I support them.
So we have a motion on the floor and second for table of forty-seven E. Mr. Benomo?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman, the table.
Yes.
Mr. Fiume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kay?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalik?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Scarsella?
Yes.
Mr. Zola?
Yes.
And Mr. John?
Yes.
Motion to table forty-seven E passes. So we have a motion, well, included in the original motion to approve forty-two through fifty-four will be forty-seven A through D.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
No.
Mr. Reba, roll call and the rest?
On numbers forty-two through fifty-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes. Ask you to approve item fifty-five, the bills...
Second.
Comments, questions? Mr. Reba?
Fifty-five, A through D, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes. Under the superintendent's agenda, I ask you to approve... Under the superintendent's agenda, I ask you to approve, uh, items 56 through 69.
Comments, questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 56 through 69, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes. Ask you to approve items 70 through 83.
Questions, comments?
Question on 70 and 71. With revised effect date 5/27/2016 and previous, Lee on 4/28? Agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Just... Wh-where's that at, Tony? I'm not sure what, or Dr. Butler?
Doc, did-
Yeah, Mr. Reba, I can respond with that. Uh, Mr. Zola, we, uh, just, there was a bit of, uh, delay there, just making sure that we were aligned with the job description before we made the transfer so that the proper training and the proper shadowing would occur. Uh, Mr. Watcher, uh, did in fact have several quality days with, um, the retiring, uh, Terry Valstekin, in, uh, learning the ins and outs of that job. They uncovered out many different aspects of the job. And again, the intent was just to make sure that we were aligning this training with the, with the job description.
Can you email me a copy of the job description, please?
Yes, I will. I'll just stand. I, I'll reach for it with Mr. Slusser and we'll get it to you. 2-0.
Thank you.
So, I'm-
Number 71, Mr. Zola? Is there a question?
It was, it's saying-
Same thing as?
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 70 through 83, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes. Asking you to approve items 84 through 87.
So moved, second.
87 was removed.
I'm sorry, 84 through 86.
Comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. President, quickly, I'd be remiss to, to not mention that number 85, uh, you really, as a board, I can't thank Mr. Joseph enough, uh, not only for his, uh, his years of service, but many people, knowing they would, to be furloughed, and, and he was aware of this months ago, would have probably cashed in. Not Mr. Joseph. He has worked and he continues to work. He sits here this evening. Um, Mr. Joseph speaks a lot about who you are as a person, uh, your, your character and your work ethic. I thank you so very, very much. And again, it, it pains me to see, uh, anyone let go and, and especially someone that's as dedicated and, and sincere as you are, Mr. Joseph. Good luck in everything you do. That all.
George, when I worked in the district, we worked together, uh, and, and I appreciated the time that, uh, that we did spend together. And I, I wish you the best. And, you know, you were one of the people that I referred to when I said, "A lot of tough decisions were made in a lot of positions." Some people took the blunt, you know, took the hit harder than, than a lot of other people had to. So, uh, you know, we appreciate your service, Bobby.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? At this time, if anyone has in the audience-
We didn't vote.
I'm sorry.
On items 84 through 86, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Okay, now. If any in the audience has any questions on any other items that are not on the agenda, please come to the microphone, state your name, and you have three minutes to ask your question.
Mark Raybo of Hazleton. Uh, I, as a matter of suggestion for what you said, uh, Mr. President, Board members about, uh, what happens after, uh, in July. Uh, the state will be deliberating on their budget, as, as you well know. I would suggest if you, uh, have a communication or dialogue with our state representatives, I think you should ask them, uh, as a, you know, as a goodwill gesture, because in 2013, uh, before the governor's election, Governor Corbett negotiated a deal that gave $140 million as a rescue package to the Phila, Philadelphia School District. Now, it wasn't reported up here. Go figure. So, I think that, uh, maybe you should ask them for maybe, you know, a little bit of a consideration on that part when they entered our budget talks, because since we did not burden them with anything in their budget impasse, I think it would behoove them to show some goodwill gesture in kind. Just the thought.
We, we did have a conversation the other night with Representative Toohill for about 20, 25 minutes on the phone, and she's gonna try to do whatever she can for us. But you have to remember, Philadelphia's a lot of legislators and we don't.
I, I know that-
And Pittsburgh also.
Mr. President, I know that, Mr. President, but I'm just saying, I think that, uh, maybe if you could convey it to the, uh, to the committees, uh, that, you know, the appropriation committee in both the House and the State Senate, I think they would be more receptive uh, to doing it for us, for this district, considering that they gave, I understand Philadelphia's a first-class city. It's, it's a county unto itself. I understand that, but I think that, uh, considering what, uh, Mr. O'Donnell said about Erie and also the other school districts, I think that it would be in all the school districts' best interest to enter into a dialogue with the state as one, instead of just, you know, uh, jockeying for position, so to speak. So, I think, uh, as a united front, I think it would be the best, uh, approach to do. Just my suggestion.
And, and sir, I, I, I think that's a, a wonderful suggestion. I, I, again, I must state that, um, we, we are severely underfunded in the Hazleton Area School District. Uh, and again, I, I thank you for all the work that you've been doing on, on the city level. It, it very, very much noticed on the county level. Uh, your involvement in the district level would be so much appreciated. We, uh, Mr. Reba, are you familiar with the term "hold harmless"?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Reba, are, are, are you Mr. Reba? Are you able, are you able to explain to our residents what "hold harmless" means and, and just how unfair it is to the district, to, especially a district like this that has just cut kindergarten, because they decide to play, in my mind, funny business with funding through this "hold harmless"? Can you just explain to the residents? Uh, I know Mr. Raybo's aware of this, but-
"Hold harmless" guarantees districts that don't qualify for certain funding levels a certain increase.
Mm-hmm. Okay, but what is that increase based upon?
It's a, it changes every year, so it's whatever the base percentage increase is that they wanna give all districts. So, districts may qualify for various things, ESL, different, you know, enhancements, I'll say, to the basic ed funding, but there's a whole "hold harmless" clause that guarantees at least X for the percentage increase.
Mm-hmm. Uh, my, my point is that, you know, in certain areas, they say that the districts are gonna be funded this amount. But under this new formula, which has increased our, our funding, uh, but not nearly where it needs to be for us to, to, to make a difference in the lives of our students.
Well, I think they should look at the 1987, uh, Local Reform Act that was, uh, passed by the, by bipartisan legislature at the time Governor Casey was in office, but it was voted, uh, in a referendum, it was voted down by Philadelphia, uh, by, by margin of four to one. I think that if that was used as a blueprint, as I suggested to our state legislatures, to reform the local tax code, because the school districts, as in, as the county, also, they rely heavily on property taxes. So, I think that needs to be changed. I mean, the state has a myriad of options to, uh, draw revenue from. So, I think that's, that needs to be, I, I think there needs to be fairness on all levels, not just-
There, there does. And, and the point that needs to be made is that the Hazleton Area School District spends about 493 times less than what other school districts spend on their students per, per student. We, we are spending that little bit per student. That's why you look at these kids, and those kids are doing so wonderful when you look at what kinda money we have to spend on those kids.
That's the testament to the teachers and to the, uh, the, the people who, who commit to serve our kids in, in this district, and I commend them. I'm grateful to-
And, and, and we have to. And, and we also have to welcome, as we do, everyone to this district, regardless of where you come from or, or when you come here, or, or what challenges you, you bring with you. We welcome you and, and we want you to feel very much at home. But know that, that comes at a very big cost to this district, and we are not funded appropriately to the needs of these students.
I agree.
And it's, it's unfair, and something has to change, um, because otherwise, it's just gonna look like we're at this dismal, failing district and we're anything but. We're, we're, we're far from that. Um, a, and my last point is if we were funded the way that they say we're supposed to be funded, we would be bringing in about $80 million in state revenue. Is that correct, Mr. Reba?
Yes.
See, I'm not pulling this out of the hat. This is the way it's supposed to be funded. We're not anywhere near that number. We're less than 40 million. Am I correct, Mr. Reba? That's the unfairness of public education. And yep, the rich get richer in public education and the poor unfortunately get poorer. But by gosh, we're gonna do everything we can for these kids.
Well, if you don't get through to them, if you don't get through to the state, give me a call. I'll go down there. I've always go, I've, I've been down there a few times and-
Well, thank you.
They're not, I'm not afraid to go down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on, Mr. Briggs.
I just wanna call the board's attention to two very important and time-sensitive items that were not voted on today. Um, item number 35 deals with our Smart Find Express, our substitute management system. Um, it's a necessary system for the district. It expires in June, restarts in July. By not approving it, we really shouldn't be using it effective Friday. Um, the second item is item number 38. Um, it has to deal with running our student system. Again, that's a July through, end of June system. Um, so without approving that, we may not have a student system on Friday. Um, if we approve it, of course, the companies will, everything will continue. They are two mission-critical systems.
I, I think just maybe in the future, we need to separate some of these items up. When, when everything's put together in a big group of numbers like that, um, they get lost. And there were questions on purchasing of the equipment, that that all- I understand. No, I wasn't meant, you know, for you.
Anyone else?
Mr. John, for time-sensitive purposes that, uh, Dr. Briggs just brought up, I'd like to reintroduce motion, uh, or item number 35 to recommend the board approve the licensing of Smart Find Express Substitute Employee Management for the period of July 16 through June 17.
I'll second that.
That costs $10,000.
Questions, comments from board members? Which one, Mr. O'Donnell just said?
That's 35.
Mr. Reba?
Number 35, Mr. Benomo?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Fiume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kay?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalik?
No, absolutely not.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Scarsella?
Yes.
Mr. Zola?
Is it, is it required to continue doing?
How many people are working in the summer? I mean, we just raised taxes. I'm looking at senior citizens here. What changes are they gonna make?
Yeah, you know what, you're right.
We sit here and we, we talk about, we're gonna make differences, we're gonna make changes.
And you're absolutely right.
And then we cave in because someone comes up and says, "Whoa, wait a second."
You're absolutely right. And I'm gonna vote no, and we do not use it during the summer. So, we have an opportunity then to go out.
Every day.
That's right. And senior citizens pay taxes every day. Are we gonna make changes? We sat up here and said, "July 1st." We're making changes. I'm starting June 29th.
When does this end in July?
End July 1st.
June 30th.
And there is nothing cheaper than $10,489.
And what does it matter? The substitutes don't answer the phone anyway, folks. We've got about a 85 percent-
But we are paying employees that can call out the substitutes-
They do, they do.
Until we find something else.
Yeah, but this is, this is also card access into the building? When, no, I mean the, uh, our regular employees. Is this where they punch in and out?
Okay, Bobby, can you explain this to us?
What this is, is connects to our payroll system directly. So, if someone takes a day off, they call into the system, it automatically deducts a day from their pay, assuming they have the remaining off their system in our HR system slash payroll. The other part of it is the substitute system, which is used to cut, call out not just our substitutes for, uh, the teachers, but we also call out the substitutes for some of the maintenance that doesn't naturally, that part of the system. That's still done manually. Okay, so basically, the substitute portion of it is just for the teachers, but it's stuff that you need for all year round, it's just for, uh-
But for the salaries and the benefits we're paying, we can do this manually?
Do it manually, uh, well, you would have to have someone answer the phone and then pick that up, and then they would have to go over to payroll and have to be deducted from our system manually.
Mr. Kraszewski, how many, how many teachers in a given day would call off? Average?
But they're not in the summer, like Mr. Mahalik said. They're not in the summer.
This isn't just for teachers now. This is for every employee in the district. So, secretary calls off tomorrow, they call into the system, and then it gets deducted off of their, of their bank.
I just don't think that we can, as much as I would like to as well do a manual system, I don't think it's possible to do a manual system when you could have excess of 100 employees call off in one given day.
I don't think it's, it, it is to do it manually for long-term, but maybe we could do it short-term and find something cheaper.
Can we start this, can we start the program, starting the effective date of school? And run the summer manually?
Okay, so can you call them? Can you call them and talk to them and try to negotiate a better deal or a, a, a shorter contract or?
Pam?
What do we do then, starting Friday, when we wanna call off? We work all summer, the only full-time union we really have. What do we do on Friday? If there's nobody at the desk, can we call off? And it doesn't get the payroll, and the check gets screwed up. Then what do we do? I'm not waiting till we even come to the thing there for another check.
So, where are we at with the vote? I, I was at, it was at me.
Was that you and Mr. John? Has Mrs. Kay changed her vote to a no?
Again, everything is time-sensitive. Everything, but, but everything is important, okay? I make a recommendation, bring back kindergarten. Let's say no to that. Let's say no to the kids out there who are not going to get full-day kindergarten. Everything's time-sensitive. 38, time-sensitive, absolutely, 'cause we have Skyward. We didn't talk about hosting this system last year when there was a lot of debate on going to the million-dollar project. This is the problem with this district. We talk and 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 we talk. We won't say another word to June 29th of next year. And that's when we'll start talking again.
No, I can promise you that.
That's when we'll look at senior citizens in the face and say, "Sorry, that's the problem." No, Bob, we, we have to start July 1st with this. I, I agree with before. We said, we need to move on one way or another here.
And the Skyward system, I, no one likes that system. It doesn't work. Everyone complains about it. And yet, we had a system that worked, and here's where the disconnect comes in. It worked, and then you wanted this system, so you kept bringing it and bringing it and bringing it until that day went.
No, she's not gonna stop. She's a board member. She's gonna speak what she wants to speak, Mr. Briggs.
Give me, I have not had a chance to speak to the board one time since all this came up except for committee meetings, okay?
Committee meetings, that's was when you should've brought this up. That's why we can vote the way we vote, because we've already heard it. We've sat through committee meetings. This isn't our first hour, like, long meeting that we're at for the month.
This was on my agenda for my committee meeting.
Right. And I questioned you, I grilled you on your agenda last month.
And, and understand, and, and because, and another, you have to understand, there's a disconnect between what I'm doing and what you guys are receiving. I take it. I gave my first round of budget cuts, which is slash computers drastic. I was told that affected students. I have thrown back in, okay? So, the message that you're giving me is different than the message I got.
Well, then the message that you need to listen to is the message from the board, because we're the ones that control the purse strings.
But the message was, again, and we sat here, and Mr. Zola said, "What about the 120 computers from the graduates?"
No, I said that. I asked him, "How many people were graduating?" It was 125. "How many freshmen were coming in?" 125. "How many computers are you ordering?" 150. "Why?" And then the extra 25 was to have extra. That's the problem. It's been the problem with the district. It needs to stop. We don't need 25 extra computers, 'cause you know what's gonna happen? They're gonna sit there, and then you're gonna come back to us a few minutes later and go, "Well, we can't use them now because they're obsolete." No, that's done now. I sent you a detailed, I sent a detailed email, never got a response. I sent it to the board. I had called Hewlett-Packard. The pricing that I got just calling off the street as one person for the exact laptops, because Mrs. Teeter gave me exactly what they were, and I gave it to the girl from Hewlett-Packard, was over $100 cheaper per laptop. Yes, it was, and I asked her if we bought in bulk, because we were a school district, if it was going to be cheaper. She gave me a number for a team that's dedicated to help us, which they also have other kind of grants, scholarships. They could help us immensely, but we don't look for that. We don't look for the best deal. Are you calling me a liar?
I don't, I don't know if this...
It was apples to apples, because I had it on the computer from Mrs. Teeter, and gave it to the girl at Hewlett-Packard.
You have great points, and I know we're gonna discuss it in the future, but I don't know if this is the setting for it. I mean, I sat in his seat for 20 years as a district employee, and at times, had to go through the same banter. We have...
And Mr. Zola, I get that, and I understand that.
And all due respect to him, you have great ideas.
And this is not about one department. This is about tomorrow morning, the first thing in the paper is gonna be, "Vinnie Zola raised taxes. Bob Mahalik's raised taxes. Bob Fume raised taxes." Okay? We do not get paid for this job, zero. But we will be the ones that slash kindergarten, slash 30 jobs, raise taxes. We're the ones that take that. The unpaid derelicts is probably what you can refer to us at, because that's what we're doing. We are trying to pick up pieces that are spilled all over the place, and we will be the ones in the paper. Nobody's gonna say tomorrow that there's, you know, a lot of unused equipment in storage, that there's staff members that are not, don't have full schedules. That's the problem. And why I'm reacting the way I'm reacting is because we just stated we were holding the line, and the first item that comes up that's a necessity, every single thing is a necessity. Tell me what's more of a necessity than kindergarten? Because 99% of this district, not my kid, my kid doesn't need full-day kindergarten. So I'm not talking about my kid. I'm talking about 99% of this district benefit from full-day kindergarten. They need that support. They need it ungodly amounts, but we cut it. We will be the board that cut it, took the largest step back of any educational institute that I'm aware of in the last 20 years. And then we just, we'll cave. We'll cave on every single thing that comes up here, and that's what we are. So, fine.
Where are we at with the vote, Mr. Briggs?
We have Mr. Zola and you.
What's the vote?
We have five yeses, two noes.
So it doesn't matter?
Yes.
Mr. John?
I guess yes.
We could change it, but it can't be changed like tonight. I think it's something we need to look into, and let's see where we go with it.
Well, you can't change it now until next year.
Well, it'll give us some time to, I mean, I'm sure it doesn't happen overnight. It wasn't put in overnight. It's not gonna be able to be taken out overnight.
Was the other one 36? No, there was another one. Which was the other one?
38.
Would you like to explain that, Dr. Briggs? Could you explain that, please?
Dr. Briggs, just by the next committee meeting, would you be able to provide, or even earlier if possible, to provide a breakdown of cost versus, of Skyward versus Power School? Because I remember the dialogue that we had when we first voted on Skyward, that Skyward was going to save us money in the long term. So if you would be able to provide that cost, because I know that there was initial payments that we were going to have to make for Skyward that shocked all of us, and that we were gonna have to make an initial investment to save money in the long term. I just wanna make sure that we are saving money now in the long term, today, and then moving forward. The other thing that I would ask you to do is, you know, give, maybe a given month or two into the school year, and then convene a similar committee of the different departments, and find out their response to the system and ways that we can improve Skyward moving forward. You know, I've been hearing the same sentiments as what Ms. Kay has raised, that some individuals don't like it. I'd like those people to come forward to you so that they can explain to you what's not working, because if there's anybody that can fix it, it would be you and your department that would be able to assist.
It's taking them much longer, which in the end is costing us more money, because it's costing manpower for them to sit there to try to get it to work.
Dr. Briggs, how many strokes does it take to change a schedule? How many strokes does it take to change a schedule? Yes. I heard 32. It's not like Power School, you could just push a button, it was gone?
To delete it.
Yeah.
Delete course by course. I don't really know how it was a power schedule. I think it wasn't involved in schedule.
And when it was down at the IU, didn't it cost about $80,000 to host it down there? In that neighborhood? And the people had to go down there to schedule sometimes?
Yes.
They don't have to do that now? Well, if you can give us...
I'm not gonna say, this report from the IU was phenomenal. That's the best thing about Power School, is we could call up Allison, get some really form-like that. Support of Skyward is not, is not that, I mean, it's not anything. I will also say that the installation, the implementation of Skyward was a disaster. And that's a lot of reason perhaps to shoot at the issue. A lot of the issues have to be resolved. Secretaries, I'm not that guilty of it, but I've spoken to, are now liking the system. People are saying, of course, there was a lot of, Mrs. Herman actually said, maybe that this was the easiest schedule that she had. Okay, so I think there's reasons for that. Unfortunately, you're doing it bad, I'm not. So my chair has said, I think I do have to get out and talk to you face-to-face. I'm not really blessed enough, and then this is getting, I'd love to talk to you about this Hewlett-Packard pricing. We are guaranteed to have the lowest price possible.
That state consortium is not the lowest price possible.
We don't get a basic pricing, but we do something. We have what's called a big deal, a big state payment. And that is, that's the lowest price possible. We might hear from other schools, talk to them. They can never lie about the price they're paying for us.
I made a phone call. If you want my phone records, I'll be happy to give them to you. I'll give you the number that she gave me for the team to call that's designated.
Maybe you could make arrangements for Hewlett-Packard to come in? And with all, and I think Mrs. Kay's done a wonderful research on this project, and the idea, like Mr. Mahalik said, we're trying to save money. And if we can save more money, and they lied to us, then there's something wrong here. And I think we'd all like to be involved and hear this.
They sent me the information by email, so I'll be happy to share that with whomever would like to see it.
Thank you.
Mr. John, I think Joan wanted, did you wanna speak?
Sure. Yep.
Did we vote on 38? Did we vote on 38?
No.
We're not?
My name is Joseph L. Stenavich. I've lived here since 1949. My mom and dad, from 1919, both, mom and dad, 1919. And I have a lot of time today to think about what I'm gonna speak about. So if I need to be, I like the way you just run the meeting, Robert rules the order, and if I need to be gavelled down, please do, but I'm gonna start with this. I thought all day from 7 o'clock this morning about, number one, an attorney, Chris Slusser, that I'm getting to know more and more. I wanna start with that, because I believe, you folks know this better than me, he's one of the best in Hazelton, number one. He's probably one of the best in the county, and he's probably one of the best in the state. And I say that from the heart. What I say tonight, I say it from the heart, 'cause I spent from 7 o'clock until 7 o'clock tonight thinking about what I was gonna say. But you know, he's protecting each and every one of yous. So yous don't make a mistake, and he don't make a mistake. And Bobby, I love Bobby. Nah, but they don't, he don't want, Bob, you're any use to make a mistake. And all of yous are doing the right thing for my grandchildren, seven and nine years old, 'cause they'll be here eventually. And my two boys, 29 and one born on my birthday, today's my birthday. This is my birthday present to my son, 26 years old. My, I gotta end, because my wife says I can talk 24 hours a day, but I've been up from 7:00 thinking about what I wanted to say tonight. And I know these people a little bit, and I know yous all a little bit. By June 29th, 'cause it's on this paper, June 29th next year, I know each and every one of you have a heart and is gonna try to correct the problems. People don't come to these meetings and don't understand the problems yous are going through. I fortunately worked for a company here for 50 years and finally retired. And I spent some time looking at what Dr. Dessin did with the lunch cam. And I don't know if you's ever been in the chamber, Can Do buildings, but I looked at that, and I said, "Oh, my God." I lived downtown, across from the YMCA since 1949, and never been in this Can Do building. But he did something that I don't think there'll ever be another Dr. Dessin or another Joe Stenavich, and the list goes on. But I care, and each and every one of yous, including myself, especially that fella. I thought about him all day from 7 o'clock this morning. But he will never, he will never let you guys make a mistake. And yous are doing the right thing for my grandchildren, and you're, I don't know your children or grandchildren. Yous are doing the right thing as best you can for your own children and grandchildren, and the future of this town. This town is probably, I try, I'm what they call a traveling man. I'll end, I'll end. But I, they call me a traveling man, and that's another day. But, but I, what I mean by that, and a lot of yous know, I go to every town across Pennsylvania to every one I can, because I have a lot of little, little things, businesses. And they, people of this town are sick with rumors. And I drove all over downtown with a little handicap vehicle, so I almost died here in May. But thank God to Dr. Relent, and thank God for all your prayers, 'cause I know a lot of yous were praying for me. And I'm here proud to say I'm proud of each one of yous, and I know you were trying, and people in this Hazelton, especially, are full of rumors. And it's, they go, if they came to these meetings, I only came to a few, 'cause yous all know which ones I came to. And I spoke positively about all of yous. And the people in this town, if they came to the meetings, would see how yous are trying to make this a better school district, number one. I was on the PTA for Heights Terrace when Dr. Antedelli was the principal. And I saw him do things that should be done in every school, but that's another, another time. Because I wanna, I do wanna end, because I don't want everybody to be going home. I need a ride from Vinnie, 'cause I'm not allowed to drive anymore.
Chris will give you a ride, huh?
I mean that from the heart. This is my birthday present to me and my son who was born on my birthday. And thank you, every one of yous. You're trying, you're trying.
This was the best part of the meeting.
And I would just like to say, Chris is the best attorney in the state of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
He wants to go home with Vinnie, not you.
Pierogi Joe, I think it might be, it might be debatable about Mr. Slusser, but what's not debatable is you have the best pierogies. Sir, you, what is, what is not debatable is you have the greatest pierogi in the world. And thank you so much for 40 years of making me overweight. Thank you, Pierogi Joe.
All right, can anyone top that? Does anyone else wanna top that?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.